Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Move.
Second.
Moved by George Lawrence, taken by Paul Tisdale, all in favor, signal with the raise of your hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. We begin with the presentation agenda, the mayor's report, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, no report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we'll move to the council report, Councilman Tisdale.
Nothing.
Councilman Lawrence, Councilman Glavin, and I have no report either. So bring us to the public agenda, citizens comments, we have three minutes per person, forty-five minutes total. If anybody in the room would care to speak, please come to the front, sign in, state your name and your address for the record. Anybody on the right-hand side of the room or my left-hand side of the room that would care to speak? Anybody on the left-hand side of the room or my right-hand side of the room would care to speak? There being none, we'll move on to the public agenda, uh, excuse me, we'll move on to the policy agenda. The subject matter of this meeting is to discuss the fiscal year budget, um, twenty, twenty, twenty-one.
Right.
Mr. Mayor.
Ready for me, Mr. President? I've, uh, given you three sort of sections of data that in an hour before one-thirty, it's gonna be a whole, a lot to cover, the, the whole nine yards, but it's gonna be, we have a group that'll help us cover any ground that you want to. But I thought it would be proper, uh, the first page here is sort of a summary of where we are to date through period eleven. And a couple of things I want you to note, uh, in this, it's kind of broken up into sections. Uh, the actual expenses versus revenue, uh, as well as the year-to-date gain or loss. And then the budgeted, uh, expenses and budgeted revenues. Uh, and understanding that we absorbed some, uh, some hits this year due to COVID. And we've recovered, you know, some things in a way, we've, you know, the, the recovery monies that we've got from BP, I'm all from, uh, Halliburton, is, is buried in those revenues. Now, if you look at the, uh, expense and revenues, we, we actually started the year with, uh, more expenses than revenues. So we would have naturally worked our way down as far as year-to-date gain or loss. So that number that you see, uh, in gain or loss, just without those expenses would have been four million dollars. You know, we would have more, uh, expenses than revenue and therefore driving that figure down. Now, we've absorbed some things and we've done some things to put the brakes on. Uh, in that, uh, presentation we did a few, uh, weeks ago, uh, we looked at, uh, put the brakes on, on spending. We eliminated, uh, some of the vacancies and that, you know, uh, stopped, uh, you know, the bleeding, so to speak. About two, about two million, maybe one point seven in revenue or in, uh, uh, personnel expenses and the rest was, uh, stopping the, the purchasing of things. And, and so, uh, we adjusted that budget and then again with the recovery of, uh, of the, uh, the Halliburton, which was about a million, and then in a couple of hundred thousand dollars with the utility refund that we had. So it puts us in a pretty good situation. I'm getting to all of this because we need to predict in the budget what's coming up is where we're gonna start cash-wise. You know, again, in, uh, two thousand, you know, last, uh, October, we estimated that we would go, estimated eight million dollars starting cash balance and with those differences be down to four million. In finishing the year, you know, uh, we're trying to figure out where we're gonna be. Uh, had we done nothing, we'd, we'd probably started about and, and performed to the budget without these extraordinary losses in revenue and the additional extraordinary expenses over time in the COVID emergency mode. So we're very hopeful that we'll begin twenty-one with at least four million cash. Accounting, y'all jump in whenever, but, you know, we're, that's the whole, uh, next exercise is to figure out where we are. Well, again, we've put the brakes on, uh, some of the expenses and we have probably about five million dollars in, in the, in the salaries, which is seventy percent of your budget and another two or three million. Uh, we've been very fortunate with, uh, gaming, you know, we initiated, you know, with initially the, uh, we had April with no revenue, no gaming revenue, which is a two-million-dollar hit, and then another one, uh, with about half of it. So at this point in time, we, uh, had a pretty good revenue figure from gaming last month or actually the month of, uh, July that was booked this year. Uh, we were just seventy, eighty thousand dollars off in that, as against the original budget of one point eight seven, you're right, one point eight seven. We really got one point oh eight, oh, oh eight seven, it's about seventy thousand off, if I'm right there. We're hopeful that, uh, a million and a half may come up our way and so that's always gonna, we're trying to flush out where we're gonna start the year so we can go through these expenses that we've, you know, cycled down or, or scoped down as far as, and been conservative in what estimates we have in revenues. Now, that's a mouthful. So basically, what I'm saying, the, these financial, uh, disposition right here is of, you know, period eleven. And again, we've got about five million dollars worth of payroll to do for the rest of this fiscal year. So we're hopeful that we'll start this place with, uh, start the, the exercise with about four million dollars in cash. Now, we're also hopeful that in the revenue, we projected some, uh, recovery of the extraordinary expenses. So that's booked as a grant in, in what's gonna follow in, as far as revenues. We're hopeful of, uh, of that as well as, you know, we're looking at every refinancing option. We've actually, uh, gonna transfer in other sources of revenue. The savings that we did from the, the Fund Twenty, again, three hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So that'll be not, you know, a one-time revenue, other sources that will offset the differences between revenues and expenses. So, uh, this one piece of paper is all, you know, the financials and cash, there's columns and, and, you know, the due-tos and due-froms is important, too. You'll note that in the, right in the middle of the play page is, is the Capital Projects Fund. And there's a due-to, due-from, the general fund, and you know, we've worked our way through eleven million dollars in debt and seventeen million dollars worth of receivables. But the, the, that balance owed to the general fund is, is about five point seven million, that's what the books reflect. So that would be, that would be, uh, another opportunity to, to say, uh, shore up, you know, from a, a standpoint. Felix, welcome, Felix, welcome back. So we ju, we just kind of started where we are physically. Uh, I think we've absorbed, you know, we've done, we've put the brakes on and the books reflect, you know, the opportunities that we took. Again, there'll be more opportunities in, in refinancing, but that won't probably shore up till about, uh, November and that would be in the utility authorities that we, we, our debt service to the utility authorities is about three point nine million dollars a year. And a similar opportunity we took with the, um, the, the bond refinancing, we, we may have here with this, uh, uh, opportunity there. Okay? Now, so are there any questions on the, uh, I call it the balance tables? So in, in a, you know, in a nutshell, you can see where we're doing, what we're doing, uh, and where we're gaining or losing. So that three point seven, three, four is considering a pretty good number for us to be in, uh, right now with the, uh, with what's left in this current year. So again, these numbers are dynamic and, and we're in a, a revenue prediction mode and, and expense prediction mode so we can shore up the, uh, the next FY twenty-one year. Okay? Any questions?
No.
Yes, I.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, so.
Is it three point seven mil, millionaire?
But I'll let George ask his question.
Right in the center.
Paul was, Paul, if you would.
So you've got, um, the first and second column, it describes the different funds and then you've got three columns, actual expenditures, current encumbered, actual revenue, then you've got another three columns, beginning balance, year-to-date, gain or loss, current balance. And you've got a third group of columns, budget, expenditures, budget, revenue and net change. And in that net change column, say for the general fund, you've got four, four point four million dollars.
That's right. That means when we started the FY year.
Right.
We had budgeted and, and it was adjusted by about a million with things, uh, grants and that sort of thing. So we actually, the difference between budgeted expenses, not, not actual, but budgeted revenues and expenses was four million dollars. So we had four million dollars more expenses budgeted and approved than, than the revenues we were expensing, okay?
I think I do, but here's my question.
Yeah.
That, that four point four two two eight, eight, six, two, that's the projected beginning?
No, no, that's just the difference.
That's where we, that's where we are right now.
That's right. And if, if we're, you know, if, if nothing extraordinary would have happened and we didn't have any additional expenses or lost expenses or whatever, our fund balance and the cash balance, not fund balance so much, but the cash balance would have been reduced by that amount because the actual revenues would have been four million dollars short, four point four million dollars short of the expenses that we anticipated. But again, that's dynamic and every year we put the brakes on. So, uh, as a matter, last time we projected, I think, uh, eight million dollars starting.
Correct.
Well, as audit flowed through, I think we actually little, we're at eight point five three seven.
Okay. So this, this document just shows us where we are as of today.
That's right.
And it's through month eleven, basically.
And, and if you look at the, you know, the key thing, at least to me, is that three point three seven, uh, loss, so to speak, because that, that is a loss. It's a positive number there, it should be a negative number. But, you know, guess what we've already absorbed? We absorbed about, about five million dollars in things. So, you know, uh, putting the brakes on and, and doing the things we did, again, over the life cycle of that, uh, bond refinancing, that was a one point something million dollars, about three hundred and seventy-eight thousand of it just this year. Okay?
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Felix? Okay.
Councilman Lawrence?
The three point seven, I think George, you were asking about.
Yeah, yeah, on this one, he got budgeted expenses sixty-six million and budget revenue sixty-one million?
That's right.
And where did we get sixty-one million dollars from?
Sixty-one million was, is, you know, we approved, I think, the original, what you approved last year, October one, was the original, uh, budgeted revenues was actually fifty-nine, three, four, six, three, two, seven. We'd estimated a beginning balance of eight million dollars in cash, eight million, eight million in cash. Okay? Right now, if you're looking at this other table, we're, we're sitting at, um, in pool cash, right this fact, second is four point four two two million. If we'd done, but basically we've expanded the revenues or the budget revenues to up to sixty-one million and also the expenses to reflect sixty-six point, sixty-six, two, four, four, nine, three, eight. So we started the year and this was what was approved at the beginning of the year. And as grants come up and, and the other expenses come up, you change that budget. But this is, this reflects the budget as, right to the second. So if you look at the budget, you got budgeted, you could spend up to sixty-six million and you, the revenues were sixty, uh, one. And that four million dollars is the difference.
Does this count money you had in the bank?
No, it's just what we budgeted. And a budgeted is an estimate of what we're gonna spend during the year. It's just pure an estimate. But we estimated that difference, or actually it was a little bit less than that, because I know we had six or seven hundred thousand dollars in grants and about nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand in additional revenues as these opportunities come up, come over. So it's a dynamic and every time we ask for a resolution, you're approving up or down with those numbers. But literally, at the start of the year, those figures were fifty-nine, fifty-nine, three, four, six, three, two, seven in the budgeted revenue figure and sixty-five, one, five, seven, four, three, eight in the budgeted expense. And then we, uh, result, you know, did budget amendments throughout the year and this is what it is right now.
So this is supposed to be current as of now?
As of today, yeah, as of today.
Even though we had, we lost four million in gaming and a million in sales taxes, we still gained two million somewhere?
We didn't gain any, we actually recovered some.
I'm happy we got here sixty-one million.
This, again.
We had fifty-nine.
Well.
Kind of confused on this, uh, you know, with a bad, bad few months.
Real, real, again, this is an estimate, okay, and this is in the budget. Not mean we're gonna spend it because we put the brakes on, okay? We didn't change, we didn't redo the budget to reduce the two point seven million dollars that we, we said we were gonna save. You know, that adjusted figure that we talked about, okay? Well, hey, we put the stops to it and we're just not gonna spend it. So we're, we can almost put your finger on two point seven million dollars of that four point two that we weren't gonna spend. We didn't change the budget to do that, but literally it, the, the, the tail of the tape is actuals, right? Actuals. Uh, what we have spent was about one point four million dollars in COVID. That was overtime and uncompensated, uh, you know, uh, I guess people sitting home, we had about three weeks of vacation, all right? That was a big hit. About two months' worth of no revenue in, 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 in gaming, okay? About a million, uh, uh, five in sales tax, all right? So that's the hit that's reflected right now, we've absorbed that hit.
But you hadn't received that money yet.
Yeah, we, whatever you see on here, we've received. And what we've received is eight, uh, let me put these glasses on. Actual revenue was forty-nine, two, one, five, three, one, five. Should've been about five million dollars more right now. Accounting, y'all jump in, see, that a boy, that's it, okay? So we had some, you know, recovery. Again, we talked about the, the resolution accepting that settlement, Halliburton, one million. We refinanced, you know, immediately, uh, three, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. We got a two, two hundred thousand dollar, uh, uh, settlement from utility authority. So that's filling that five million dollar hole.
You said you received all this already?
Yeah, what's, everything is received on this pic, this is what we have. What we haven't, you know, what we didn't get is the two million dollars in April that we were booking. In May, we got one weekend, we got about, what was the May gaming revenue? Seventy thousand, something like that, not much, okay? June came along, we were, we were a little bit slow. Uh, again, we had budgeted for next year, okay? Given what, where we are and what we're, we're anticipating, all right? But in this exercise, we have three months of this year, you know, COVID-related stuff this year. We said use about seventy-five percent, okay, of last, of the prior year's gaming numbers for the remainder of two thousand, uh, you know, twenty. And then go full steam, January through October or through Ju, to September. We were, turns out, uh, last month, we were eighty-one percent instead of seventy-five percent. And, and, and this month, we were ninety-something of the original figure. Again, we budgeted, I don't have all these memorized, we budgeted one point eight seven million receipts before COVID. We actually got one point eight oh seven million. So that's a good sign and we're hopeful that August will be good, too, when we receive it in September. And, you know, with things coming back, uh, we're, we're hopeful that we'll be in a better position. But for budgeting purposes, as you can see, there's a two-page attachment here, is what we're thinking about for next year. Right in the middle of the page, you see gaming figure. And if, uh, last year, we had budgeted eighteen point nine five, or eight nine, excuse me. And we said, let's kick that down just to be conservative. So what we're using as part of this revenue is two million dollars off. So we're budgeting seventeen, and these figures that we're gonna continue on, we're budgeting seventeen million. You know, that's very conservative. We could easily kick that up some just to make numbers, but these are all guesses. You know, these are educated guesses based on numbers. So what you see in these two pages are, I think, of, 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 an educated, uh, shot at where we're gonna be, you know, in October one of two thousand and twenty-one. And here we are, you know, a year away. But, you know, if, if you look at, you know, our audits and some of these, uh, things, we've always outperformed and been in a better position that we, we were guessing with in, you know, in, uh, the end of September. I don't know if that answers your question.
What are the July's, uh, gaming taxes?
What's that?
July's.
July, well, July that we collected in August was one point oh, one point eight oh seven, one million eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. Okay? Before COVID, we do it month by month because each month is a little different than the one prior year. You know, things are slow in, in, in January. Uh, and so there's a month-by-month sort of comparison. We had budgeted one point eight seven.
Yeah.
Okay? So we're hopeful, man, if you know, I think our, our figure for Sep, what we were receiving September for August business was one point six million, Diana? So.
So you should act, even as bad as it was, we should still do more than seventeen million, what you broke it down to.
Well, that's what we're guessing, yeah, yeah.
You dropped it from eighteen seven to seventeen.
Yeah, and, you know, we, we could actually kick that up, uh, up some numbers for the first three months of the fiscal year, which would be October, November and December.
I didn't notice the eleven months you ever listed on here, the total amount of, uh, gaming taxes on here, eleven months?
Not in total, not, uh, yeah, there it is, it's there, exactly. It's, it's in that line right there, uh, in revenue, because it shows you year-to-date and that's up to date, let's see. Year-to-date, we've received fourteen point oh nine six million in gaming. You see, with the year-to-date and FY twenty-twenty, right in the middle of the page, gaming.
Yeah.
All right, so that's what we've done through July business, but received in August. So hopefully we got another, maybe three million coming. No, no, excuse me, one point five million. But again, you know, the more we get, the more beginning balance we'll have to begin the twenty-one year. Okay?
We got lucky, did a million eight this month, we'd break even.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if, if, if we received one point six million, that would be extraordinary because we were budgeting at least seventy-five percent of that, back when this thing started hitting us in May.
Anything else you expect to be up?
I'm sorry?
Sales taxes, anything, what do you think, we're gonna get closer to being even with the sale of taxes?
No, we're about a million, we're gonna wind up with about a million five in sales tax. Oh, it just came out. Yeah, the, the, last month's sales tax was one, one million seventy-three thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And that's gonna put us about, you know, a million five short if, if, I'm not sure exactly where we'll be. But I, I think we had estimated, when the smoke clears, we'll be three point five million dollars in gaming revenue down and one point five million in sales tax down. So that hit, that's five million, is that we've been reflective in the current year and offset by the revenues and the other, things coming in from other sources. They're studying, I don't know, if we can, you want me to sing a song?
I mean, the numbers are what they are.
Yeah, no, it, it literally, you know, the, the efforts that the, the team has, you know, but, you know, it was literally one point seven million dollars in removal of vacancies and things you don't, we don't have to have right now. So that offset that four million dollars that we started at the beginning of the year by at least that amount. So when you look at that five million dollar hole, one point seven is it came from no vacancies? You know, another million came from, uh, the recovery from Halliburton. Another three hundred and seventy-eight thousand came from, uh, the refinancing of the, the two bonds.
The bonds.
Okay? Another two hundred thousand came with the arrangement we did at the utility authority. Now, keep in mind, there's some more opportunities, but we're not saying it yet.
And I guess that's where I'm headed with the opportunities area because, uh, if we're looking at the, the COVID expenses.
Yeah.
That we, we accrued it, is there any opportunities of recouping some of that money?
That's in this budget, that's in this budget, what we're doing. And if you look, uh, it's one point three million, it'll stick out on you right, right, little bit, uh, down from the intergovernmental.
What number?
It's, uh, one, uh, oh, one hundred, forty-four, thirty, uh, COVID, uh, let's see, it's about, yes, fine, D E T O one.
Okay, got it.
You see it?
Disaster COVID, right.
Yeah, that's what we're applying for, one point three million to FEMA. Again, we've documented that and we were, and luckily that, you know, we have a basis because, you know, after the hurricane and some of the things that we did by statute, said we will pay premium pay to those people who have worked and, and, and that was, uh, four hundred of them, I guess, right? At double time or, uh, premium pay. And then some of them that were sitting at home without working, without using their annual leave. So we've got a good, maybe more than that, and this is not over yet, okay? Any, part of that one point three million is the.
But we only asking for it right now.
And it's open, just like a storm, it's open and, and we're, think, what was the, they said it needs to be in by December, from a FEMA standpoint? Maybe, well, October, close enough. All right, so, but that, that even, there could be even more. But we know it's true, you know, uh, there's some, you know, COVID Relief Care Act money and so forth that they delineated by its population and, and it, right now, I think we had a million, a little bit. But, you know, literally, uh, we expect that to change. So, I mean, I, I'm real comfortable while saying, we're gonna recover one point three million at some point in time for COVID. Not lost revenue, because we, we were still chasing that, too. I mean, that hadn't been, from Washington down, that hadn't been, been covered, but we're, we're hopeful of every opportunity there. Okay? Uh, the other, you know, again, I mentioned a little bit about refinancing, then we're looking at every opportunity to refinance based on, uh, you know, uh, you know, the, the numbers that are out there. It may go to zero interest rate.
Yeah.
Instead of one point nine five. Okay? Let's, let's go, the easiest thing to do is, is look at revenues. You know, this is just general, this is just two pages. Okay, bottom line is fifty-nine, eight oh five, zero eight one. Okay? When you look back at the revenues from last year, we had budgeted, you know, sixty-one million. So we're conservative in what we're, what we think we'll, we'll connect, collect. So looking back at the single balance sheet tables, we've reduced the, the expectation by a couple of million dollars. But that's not to say we can't adjust up based on conditions. Let me, uh, let me say again, that one point three that Felix brought up, that's, that's part of the deal. Uh, we've got some, um, you know, some of the, uh, administration fees, that's what, sort of the, the indirect cost that, and that's a million four, is that right? That we've budgeted in this figure, one million four. That's what Port Authority and, and the Water and Sewer pays back to the general fund to offset some of the things that are done in the general fund. So that's part of that, too. Again, you look, go back to the balance sheet, uh, in Water and Sewer, balance sheet shows that Water and Sewer is, year-to-date, gain or loss is one point seven million. See in the forty fund in, in this one single sheet? Now, and it also owes five hundred something thousand dollars to the general fund. So at some point in time, when the cash flow is proper, we'll, that really belongs to the general fund in some sort of, uh, offset. And as well as the five point seven million in the thirty fund, that's owed to the general fund. So you got, if you were looking at a pure balance sheet, that five point seven is in the balance sheet of the O-one fund and that's an asset. Same thing with the five thirty-five. So anyway, there's a lot of opportunities to get this thing balanced in, in, you know, in, in how we move forward. All right, but keep in mind, that forty and that forty-four fund i- is not a, a, you know, like the general fund, you know? Anything you gain from that year can be used to, and, and we've actually put the brakes on trucks and some of these other opportunities. But literally, there's one point seven million dollars in opportunity in the forty fund to be used if you wanna buy trucks, whatever we're talking about buying this year, trucks and, and things. So part of, I, I doubt that we can get to that before one-thirty meeting. But, uh, part of what we're proposing this year is a number of trucks and a number of pieces of equipment to use a little bit of that money we're gonna gain by the end of the year to buy some things that we didn't buy and projects that we didn't do in this year. Okay? We're going along, I don't know how we're going on time, one or two?
Question, Mr. Mayor. And looking at the, uh, that first sheet you gave us, which, uh, and you were talking about the forty fund.
Right.
And there's a due-to, due-from, correct, to the general fund of five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars?
Right.
All right? And you, see, I'm understanding due-to, due-from after three years of tutoring funding. All right, then if, if we look at the, uh.
General fund?
No, the, the forty fund still, you said, uh, we've got a, a gain of one point seven million?
Right.
All right, so why don't we pay the, the general fund back that half a million right now?
Well, we could.
Or this next year, can we do that?
We could.
Or we, but we have some options there.
No, we have options and that's with consideration. You know, the cash is there, you know, if you look at that cash column, that's the cash we got, you know, in, you know, that we reconcile. We, they, they, bird dogs, whether it belongs to this account or that account.
Right.
And just a number, but literally I'm saying, if you're worried about the general fund and some of these numbers, there's five point seven sitting in, in, you know, we, we just paid eleven million dollars off the last two point seven million dollars in that payment, you know, because we had. you know, because we had owed, that number was way up there, until we borrowed that money, until we got the, the FEMA money started rolling back. So that cash is there, and the due tos and due froms can be swept back.
Okay.
If we choose to do that.
Another question, do we still have, because I don't, I don't see any due to, due from to the Port Commission? Are we all square with the, with the Port?
Yeah, a little bit, there's a little about twenty-six thousand.
Okay, alright. Yeah, I see it, okay, yeah, I missed that, alright, that's it.
But they all should point back, then there's a little difference in, in timing between Water and Sewer, and, and I think that comes with when, it's sort of a modified accrual when we do gaming, so, I mean, uh, billing, so. Yet really, just like the, the General and Capital Projects, it should be the same number. So when you wa, when you take the cash out of one, put it in the other, then you wash those two accounts.
Alright, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
On the, on the baseball, you have three twenty, and you collected two seventy-five, where you get the two seventy-five from? Is that the hundred and fifty thousand for the lease of the stadium? With the baseball on the bottom, coming up.
The stadium lease is due October one, right, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And they've already paid their last, October one, for the rent, coming up, in the fifteen fund, yeah. Okay?
You, you leased the stadium to them for a hundred and fifty thousand, the baseball team?
Hundred and fifty thousand, yeah.
Okay, but you got down there two seventy-five, so where'd you get the other hundred and twenty-five from?
Okay, where you see the two seventy-five? Two, two hundred thousand seventy-five dollars? Two hundred thousand seventy-five?
At three twenty to start, and you wound up with two seventy-five, I just wonder where you got that much money, so. The maintenance of twenty-five on the bottom might have nothing to do with anything.
Where, where, where are you talking about, George, give me a number on this?
Coming from the bottom, on the revenue.
On the revenue side, okay.
This is baseball stadium, three twenty.
Okay, go, that's what it used to be, okay, that's two thousand nineteen. Okay, you got two thousand twenty to date, and then over to the right-hand side, what we're budgeting in, in baseball is two hundred, is that right? For the rent, look at that, down at the bottom, I think it's fifty fifteen? Yeah, we, we reduced that, two seventy-five to two hundred. Yeah, we don't think we're gonna get that money, there's, you know, a hundred and fifty is the rent, it's the only thing you can book at, there's no ticket sales. And, and there's no idea that there will be another, you know, early on in two thousand nineteen, and even before that, there were some expectations of ticket sales and other things, but we have none. So to be conservative, we know we're gonna get a hundred and fifty, and maybe the, the rest is somewhere else, is that not right? Yeah. That's, that's right.
I was just wondering, that's a big difference, on the baseball stadium, bringing that kind of money, extra.
No.
Going up from there, go to the, the B mail? Or whatever you call it, what do you call this?
Wait, but where are we, George?
What number are you on, George?
It's a hundred and eighty thousand.
This is in the revenue picture?
We took in a hundred, yeah, same, coming up from the bottom, and we took in a hundred and two thousand. Does that include the money you took out of other people's account, the twenty-five?
Wait a minute, what, what account are you looking for, George, where at, where are we, on this, these two pieces of paper right here?
The B mail, right here on the bottom, yeah.
B mail? B News? Yeah, that's the revenue, that, that's the, the advertising revenues that we'll, we'll pull in.
Yeah, but I said the hundred and two thousand, people that paid for advertisement.
That's what it's collecting.
We took out a, who's the account, we took it out of, Jerry Discount, that's, that's not included in this. That's different money, okay. So this is what you actually took in. Okay, do you have more money to take in? You have still some?
In the revenue page, and I think it's, uh
Okay, how much would that be roughly? Fourteen, fourteen thousand, so it'd be fourteen thousand more added to there.
Okay.
Way to go, Cecilia.
Alright, so those revenues estimated for twenty-one, again, estimated fifty-nine eight oh five. And, and wouldn't have to twist some arms to increase that, based on numbers that are gonna happen between now and then. But unfortunately, we've got to project cash, and by Thursday, and, and the usage of these numbers, not only for this, these General Fund, Water and Sewer, and Port, but anything else from debt service. So we're under the, the gun to estimate something, you know, and get it advertised, what's that down, by Thursday? So we're gonna come up with the, you know, the piece of paper that you know and love, and, you know, that, the combined funds, it shows you where we've started, where we're estimating to start, where we're estimating to end, and put that out for, I think, public notice, so they can come in and comment, but, you know, again, this is very dynamic, and, you know, with, these are, you know, within forty-eight hours, we'll have the numbers that we're prepared to advertise. And then when is the, the public hearing on the, the budget, September? First? Okay.
First weekend September?
Yeah. And you vote for final approval on the fifteenth of September? And then, and Jody loads the budget into operation on October one. Alright, so any more questions on revenues?
I, I have one, our BP settlement, where is that in here, is it reflected?
It's in there, it, it's actually already been booked in twenty, in cash. Yeah, we've got that booked in the, in the twenty year, twenty twenty year. That was in, uh, the, I don't know what the account number was, it was in recovery, but it was one point oh one? What was it, what was it? It's in the, it's already booked this year, so that was, we weren't expecting that, you know, anything, it was like twenty thousand, it was total, and, and it was like one point six total, I think, wasn't it? Anyway, but basically, it's in this year. And, and also the two hundred thousand dollars is in, from the Utility Authority settlement that we did with, with the utility, we got two hundred thousand, that's booked in there, so that's, that's pretty much, you look at that number, that's why we're, you know, a little bit ahead of where we thought we would be, with the five million dollar loss. And also, some of it won't be in, there's three hundred seventy-eight more thousand dollars that'll be transferred from the twenty fund to the O one fund, because that's, you know, that's the refinancing thing. So if you just look at that number, it kind of brings me to to the next stage of this deal. If you look at the single page, this is the expenses, for the, you know, the operational, you know, the, the General Fund as well, as well as Water and Sewer, and the budget, we're in different categories. This is a single page, and I think it probably says the expenses at the top. And this one, you have two headings called FY twenty twenty adjusted, and FY twenty twenty-one proposed, and there's a change. So what we did, I had mentioned the two point seven million dollars that we went through to say, put the brakes on, that's reflected. So we actually, if, if you look at the original budget, sixty-something million, we put the brakes on and said, no, you cannot spend more than fifty-nine. So that's a reflection of what we did to, to stop the bleeding.
Which sheet is on this one?
This is the one that says expenses. This is, this is
What is this, four, or three, or two? I think it's these are numbered in some kind of order.
Alright, this, this, you have one that says expenses, there was a single page that says expenses, you had two pages that says revenues, and the other one is just the balance sheets.
I'll make this one page four in my book. I like, we have to go cut these things down, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, we're on expenses.
Expenses, you got it, it shows the departments, right? You see a figure that says fifty-eight oh six one six eighty-nine? And then you see another figure that says, that's in, in highlighted, in, in four point five three nine eight oh one? You with me? You got it, everybody's on this page?
I was gonna ask, Jody, do these full-time employees, the six forty-three, we lost one from last week.
Let me answer that, let me answer that.
I saw, relax, both of you relax.
No, I am relaxed, I am relaxed. Jody does a good job, and so does Jill. You got a column that says total, at the bottom of that, is that the picture, the paper you're looking at? I may, I may not have that total. Yeah, I got, this, I got the right one, okay. Alright. These are full bodies that are on a payroll five hundred eighty-four, in General Fund, thirty-three, in Water and Sewer, three, uh, twenty-six, and Port, and a total bodies right now, six hundred forty-three. But we've got in these budgeted figures, those vacancies, about twenty, right? Twenty-one. So in the budget, it's not only these full-time employees, but the vacancies that we deferred, and the ones that we absolutely need, because there was about a hundred and one vacancies when we put, you know, put the brakes on. Is that accurate? Okay. So basically, in, in this personnel expense part of the deal, the forty-one something million, or forty million, that includes not only the people who are on board now, but the vacancies that we're proposing. And most of them, like, you know, is in police and fire, you know? And, you know, they've been creative in, in what they can do, and as far as equipments they can, they can use too this year versus what was in the budget from the prior year. George, did I answer your question?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Alright, so if you look at, at the thing, this is what we think is gonna happen in two thousand twenty-one, after we put the brakes on and, and looked at what personnel we absolutely need. The categories that, you know, you, you, we've kind of delineated, is, you know, of course, personnel, that seventy, that represents about seventy, seventy percent of the ballgame. And supplies, and services, and contractual kinds of things, and insurance, and, and capital items, that's a breakdown. So each department will be using these, these numbers and, and, that they have to operate with. The bottom line, when you look at the whole picture, when you add, let, let me kind of point out. You see the fifty-eight oh six one six eighty-nine? Then you got about four million dollars, four point five three nine million dollars in non-depart, no, and that's always a, you know, we've reflected some of the interactions that we had at the last council meeting, and that was about ninety-seven thousand, we added back to it. Ninety thousand. Alright, so the bottom line figure that, you know, that you're gonna be looking at is sixty-two million six oh one four ninety against the revenues, which was fifty-nine something another. What? Fifty-nine eight oh five, so that's, that's the nut right now. But again, offset some things, you know, three seventy here, maybe some other opportunities that, that will come about.
We still have the General Fund balance to offset that if we needed to dip into it.
Yeah, yeah, no, exactly. I mean, you know, if, if we start at four million dollars, say, if we start at four million dollars, then what we'll have, and we do to these budgets, another opportunity's coming, we don't make any adjustments, and we perform to that budget, we'll have, you know, that deficit, which is two point seven million, off the four million. I expect to, you know, maybe we'll be even better positioned. So you'll wind up, and it's pretty much a worst, worst-case scenario, in my opinion. Because we got cash all, all over the place, I mean, if you want to just say, let's have more cash, let's take some due to, and due froms, I can take two point seven million out of capital projects and put it in there, as other income sources. But I don't, I don't think that's necessary, I mean, cash is cash, we got it, you know, we, we bird dogged that every, you know, every week and every day. You know, as things come, you know, they make the distributions, and we're aware of where we need to be, and plus, we got good credit. So everybody's comfortable, the deficit, you know, the, the thing, we got about two point seven nine six million more expenses at this point in time versus what we're anticipating in revenues. Now, would a little, like I said, wouldn't take me too much, you know, to say, especially in, in probably ten more days of the next month, we'll figure out whether that two point seven is gonna work its way down. Could we not be, you know, we may be more than seventy-five percent for the first three months, you know, that seventeen million, we could get seventeen million for the whole year in gaming, that could be up a million pretty easy. But we're not, you know, from worst-case scenario, which we're trying to get to, that, that difference is two point seven million.
Question on, go back to the revenue, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Those two pages stapled together. I see property tax
Right, increased. We're estimating about a three percent uplift in, in things coming on, online, you know, with some abatements that went away, and just generally, I think a three percent, three percent uplift in asset valuation for our tax districts.
Okay. Alright, we talked about the COVID, with any luck, we might get one point three million there. On the second page, it's gonna be forty-seven thirty-seven, the waterfront?
Right.
That's, we're looking at a rent reduction. There, I understand, I'm just curious, what, what goes into that account?
Okay, you know, there's, there's a base rent, plus a, a sharing of anything over the base GGR.
That's for the gaming, then, is what that is, that waterfront.
That was the, the golden nugget rent.
Okay, so waterfront, so that, that waterfront item is really a gaming-associated?
That's it.
Alright, that's, that's
But it's based on, you know, there's so many dollars over, it's split three ways, if it overcomes it, which, you know, this year, with COVID, we're not booking, you know, we're not being really aggressive, we're not pushing it to the limit.
Okay, on the expenses? Yeah, on, on the expense sheet, down there where we have the employees under personnel, and we've got administration, and that's going up fifty-five thousand, what accounts for that increase?
Well, I think we, you know, we replaced a few people, like, you know, our accounting manager.
Right, okay, but, but I read that correctly, that's an increase in personnel costs?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's all I have, thank you.
Going back to administration.
George, I'm sorry, we have a, a regularly scheduled council meeting here in a few moments. I wanna, we need to tidy up a few concerns moving forward with the budget sessions.
Sure.
And then move on to the regular scheduled meeting, and we can return to another budget meeting for the remainder of this discussion. We just received this, I think we need to review it, soak it in.
Sure.
Where are we at on finalizing a deadline for the, for the budget hearing and, and the publication?
Well, again, within the, the next forty-eight hours, I think we'll be ready to, to propose, you know, give the newspaper what we're thinking. You know, worst-case scenario, the usage, you know, the, the revenues against it would be two point seven million unless we come up with some, hey, move the due tos and due froms.
Thank you.
So we're, we're very close. What, what, we're just gonna find the look and feel, I think, of what we found, you know, I think the Harrison County School District, instead of publishing some, some numbers in about twenty columns, there's a, a, a proposed option that shows trust and agency, General Fund, capital projects, and then the usage of, you know, the fund balance in order to complete the budget. So we'll show the revenues, the expenses, the uses of other funding sources, and the, the, the change from fund balance or cash balance in this, in this case. So we're close to that, I mean, I, I don't see anything changing in the General Fund or the Water and Sewer, right? Okay, and we're just a matter of look and feel, so we'll be ready by Thursday morning? Yeah, or tomorrow?
Thursday?
Tomorrow, yeah.
So we'll have, we'll have a, a proposed budget by Thursday, we'll have it in our hands by Friday?
Yeah.
It's September fifteenth.
Well, it's gotta be, the public hearing needs to be, you know, before that meeting. Well, it's got to be, the public hearing needs to be, you know, before that meeting.
Fiscal 2021 on so-and-so date. The meeting will be held in the council chambers. The city of Lexi is now operating with a projected revenue of X. And for the next fiscal year, the projected budget will be total will be Y. That's essentially what we have to publish, so it's very generic and very high level.
Right.
We have to publish it along with the notice for the public hearing.
I just want to make sure that we have a copy of it in our hands, instead of having it sitting on the table when we show up for the meeting.
We'll get it to you directly, for publication, you'll have it, and then, probably tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you. Quick wrap-up questions, if there's anything you want the mayor to think about, or Mr. Mike, the CAO, to think about prior to this budget hearing? Mr. Tisdale? Mr. Lawrence?
I was going back to administration budget, real quick question.
Not a question, a statement.
Say it, make a statement.
A statement, tell them what he, what you're willing, what you're wanting to find out about. We don't have time to go back and forth right now, so just.
Well, that's what I want to find out about, why are we up in that budget when we had a big move? Had a big vacancy left, looked like we were going to be down about 200, 300,000, not up.
We are, if you look at the budgeted, the adjusted budget that we were, if you go look at the original budget, that's, that's 200,000 dollars down, we're just putting, from the adjusted budget because we filled a position we needed to fill.
I mean, it just, there should be, it should be a big negative number in there, not up plus 50.
It is, when you look at the original budget of 60 something million, I can show you exactly what it is.
It is, there. Will we nail that down in the next meeting? Good, Nathan, Felix, Councilman Glavin, and Mr. Mayor, I think we're still waiting on something from both Frank and Cy regarding insurance, I think updates from them.
I think so.
Just, we'll, we'll look forward to those. I have a motion to recess.
Second.
Motion by George Lawrence, second by Paul Tisdale, all of them. I don't know that we'll schedule another one, we have the actual hearing the first month of, the first meeting of September. If we need to schedule one, we will at that point, or we will, we'll work on that as next few days. All in favor? Most in case unanimously, we're in recess. We'll be back in five minutes for the.